Thank you very much. Item number two, amendments to the agenda. I did not see anything new, just wanting to double check, otherwise they will stand as distributed. Item number three, approving the minutes of the April fifteenth, 2025 board meeting that was distributed. Do we have any changes or additions, deletions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Motion and second, any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes will stand as distributed. Item number four, new employees. We had a raft of new employees today, so why don't you make your way up to the podium and tell us a little bit about who you are, what you're doing, and what did we leave them with, a fun fact?
One little unknown fact, interesting fact.
Yes, interesting fact, so it could be.
Anything you want.
Anything, anything. Please, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Kelly Barrett. I'm working as an Assistant Probation Officer with Community Corrections. I was previously here for 23 years, took a little break, and now I'm back. A little fun fact is, it feels bittersweet to be in here. My dad used to be a county commissioner. I'm going to get emotional. Anyway, and he's since passed, and so I just, yeah, it's bittersweet being in this room, because he loved, yeah, doing this. Anyway.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Rogie. I'm with the library. I'll have to say, hands down, this is the best county I've ever worked for, and it's my, the only county I've ever worked for. So, I'm very, very happy to be here.
That doesn't mean you make questions, but the worst county.
Right.
Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Emira Wasami. I'm a public health nurse. I'll be working in the human health services. This is my first public health nurse job, and I'm really happy that I joined Scott County.
Welcome, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Griffin Wald. I'm a library associate over at the library. Fun fact, when I started volunteering at the Shakopee Library when I was about 13 or 14 for the summer reading program, and still here.
There you go. Welcome.
I'm Kayla Niehaus. I'm an eligibility specialist for Medicaid in the Income Maintenance Department, and a fun fact for me is I once performed at Carnegie Hall.
Wow. There's a microphone, what else do you need?
I'll bring a piano.
I played instrument, terrible singer.
Welcome.
I'm Kristin Fisher. I'm an appraiser in property and taxation, and fun fact, I have a seven-year-old that's into carnivorous plants, so we have a bunch of Venus flytrap, pitcher plant, sundoo, trying to keep them alive.
Hello, my name is Josh Walzak. I'm a fraud investigator for HHS, and I am from Buffalo, New York.
All right, was there any wings in here? No? Okay.
Ruby Dascopta. I'm an Assistant Scott County Attorney in the County Attorney's Office. I was previously here for over 20 years, left for about a year and a half to work at the Attorney General's Office, realized I missed county government, and so now I'm back. Fun fact is that I tap dance.
Oh, we just took the hard surface away. Shoot. Welcome.
My name's Rachel Preston. I'm administrative specialist in HHS. Fun fact, I've been in Scott County for about six years, have all my kids here, and we love it.
Welcome.
My name is Rachel Peterson. I'm the new connect therapist at the Metcalfe Center, work at two elementary schools in Shakopee. Fun fact, I was actually born in Scott County and lived in Belle Plaine until my family moved in middle school, and have a lot of extended family in Belle Plaine, so this feels pretty full circle.
Nice. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Marshall Lyons. I'm in Health and Human Services Management, and I'm the new Business Operations Manager. Fun fact is, I like playing board games with my kids.
Nice, welcome.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Madison Gonzalez, and I'm an investigator for child protection. Fun fact, I'm from Medford, Minnesota, if anyone knows where that small little town is, and was in Wisconsin for nine years, and now making our way back to Minnesota, chose Scott County.
Welcome. Thank you so much for choosing Scott County. There's something magical about county. I don't know what it is, right? I know you feel it, county government, where's that? So, so thank you for choosing public service, and we're happy to have you here in Scott County, so thank you, welcome. All right, we're going to move, should we skip, as I looked at Neil, should we skip item number five? No, we're not going to skip item number five for recognition of interested citizens. This is a great time for people to come and avail themselves, to say whatever they would like to the county board and staff. Oh, we have, we have a taker here, and I think we might have more than one. Welcome, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. My name is Jen Schultz. I'm the Scott County Library Director, and I'm here this morning to recognize National Law Day across the nation and in Scott County. Law Day is an annual observance celebrated in May each year to honor the role of law in the foundation of our country. Law Day gives us the opportunity to celebrate the role of law libraries in the legal system and the public across, and public access to legal information. Scott County Law Library provides our residents with access to information and justice, support for legal research, public service, civic education, preservation of legal history, and professional development. The 2025 Law Day theme is what does the Constitution mean to me, emphasizing the unifying power of the U.S. Constitution. It highlights how the Constitution bridges differences and brings Americans together through civic responsibilities and the collective pursuit of justice. To celebrate Law Day this year, the Law Library hosted an art competition for Scott County students, grade six through 12. Students were asked to create art pieces based on this year's theme. All entries were voted on by staff at Court Administration, and it's my pleasure this morning to win, to announce our winners. First place winner was Athenia Surin. Second place winner, Morgan Dietrich. Third place winner, Adriana Barokov. Fourth place winner, Adriana Grinberg. And fifth place winner, Saharsha Sanish. The winner's artwork, and I want to share with you, hopefully you can see that picture, with our Law Librarian, our Law Library Manager, Ally McNeil. But the artwork, these five pieces of artwork are on display on the wall across from the fireplace in the atrium area, so if you have a chance today, please take a look at that. Also, today, to celebrate Law Day, we are hosting an open house in the Law Library between nine and one, so please stop down there. You can see all of the submissions of artwork that we received. At 11:00, we'll have a little competition ceremony for the five winners and some swag for prizes. We're also going to have games, refreshments, and of course, information as well. So, in closing, I would just finally like to give a huge shout out and thanks to Ally McNeil, our Law Library Manager. This work wouldn't be possible without her. She shows up every day to serve our residents, and I am so grateful for her dedication, her diligence, and just really overall zealous customer service to all the residents of Scott County. So, thank you, I just wanted to share that information, and please, maybe on your way out, or if you have time today, stop down and say hi.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, yeah. She looks very proud in that picture of that artwork, so we need to see that, we need to see that artwork.
Yeah, stop by, it's hanging up, it's great.
And it, it goes until when?
The open house is till one, but that artwork will be hanging.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
You can see that artwork probably all day, it might be hanging longer than that as well, so.
That sounds great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Welcome, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Neil Johnson. I live at 2146 Norton Drive in Deerview Acres. I'm here to address some of the concerns that the 19 households have concerning the County Road 17 reconstruction project. I was a teacher in the Shakopee School District for 39 years. I had the opportunity to write a lot of lesson plans over those years. Some worked out great with the students, understanding the topic. Other times, the topic was not clear, and I had to change my plans, make adjustments so that the class understood and we could move on. Even one year, the approach might have worked, the next year, it did not work. So, it made me a better teacher to always read what was happening and be willing to change my teaching to accommodate the student. I believe this highway project is like a lesson plan. It has some great features. A new roundabout where County Road 17 meets County Road 14, it's a very busy intersection. Another roundabout where County Road 82 meets County Road 17. There have also been some near misses there. But what I'm here to discuss is what is proposed for Deerview Acres. I attended the Scott County meeting on April 23rd. I have to say right now that many of us, including maybe some of you here, were under the impression that the new road was going to be two lanes north and two lanes south. It's not. Many discussions talked about a J-turn to the north of Deerview, but if it is a one-lane road, turning around with a truck or trailer and having curb and gutter there would be difficult. I actually went to the candy store down in Jordan just to turn around, but I could not make the inside lane. I went to the outside lane. A neighbor said that they were pulling their camper and had to use the shoulder to turn around and get straightened out. But our biggest concern is access to Deerview. The plan allows for us to come out, turn right, and go north. The plan allows us to come from the south and turn right to come home. If we are coming home from Shakopee and want to turn left, we are blocked. If we want to turn left when we are coming out to go to Jordan, Prior Lake, or New Prague, we are blocked. Our conversation also included emergency vehicle access. One comment was that fire trucks and ambulances could go down to the roundabout and come back. And whether it's three minutes or five minutes, why are we blocking a fire truck or an ambulance? Three years ago, a fire happened next door to me, and tankers were lined up. I'm the fifth house in the development, about a quarter mile in. They dumped the water into a pool and had to go back, whether it was to Shakopee or wherever, to fill up the tankers for several hours. Another conversation meant, mentioned putting a cement curb that trucks could go over. Again, I ask, why are restriction when we need help? Finally, I heard that the area would be served by the SMSC Fire Department. I am quoting Fire Chief Hanson right now from Shakopee directly. They are not responsible for covering your neighborhood. Scott County Engineering and Dispatch recommended it, but they cannot make the decision. If that were to happen, a discussion would first need to occur between the Shakopee City Council and the SMSC Council. The concern about manpower is one of the items to discuss. Adding neighborhoods and areas may affect their staffing levels. The determination as to whether they have enough staff to cover those additional areas would need to be discussed between the council and the fire chief. Currently, there are no discussions to change which fire department covers any of the neighborhoods affected by this project. Shakopee Fire will continue to be the primary response agency, and we can call Meadowacken and Fire for mutual aid when necessary. Our request is simple, don't put a grass or cement median in front of Deerview Acres. I was told it would be for safety reasons, so the reconstruction of County Road 17, 10, 15 years ago, made our entrance unsafe. I don't think so, it is safe right now. As a teacher, my final thought will be a two-point, two-part assignment for all of you Commissioners. I invite all of you or just one of you to come out to my place and watch traffic with me. If it's in the morning, I'll provide the coffee. If it's in the afternoon, I'll give you a water and a lemonade, and you can see for yourself what we encounter daily. We can wave at cars like I do with my grandkids. The second part, I want each of you Commissioners to do this when you go home today or tonight. Drive by your driveway, but don't turn in. If you live in town, drive down three blocks, turn around, and then come back. If you live in the country, drive a quarter mile and then come back. That's what you're asking us to do for many years to come if you put a median in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming and taking advantage of this opportunity, and it was a great conversation and joy to talk with you at the open house, and more conversations to come. Is there anyone else that would like to jump up at this opportunity? Seeing none, thank you again. We're going to move to item number six on the agenda, 6.1, Presentation of the Morris S. Miller Health Hero Award. Sheriff, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to have Captain Steve Collins present the award today, and then we'll do some photographs afterwards.
Great, great, welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Today, we gather to recognize the courageous and selfless actions of individuals whose quick thinking and decisive response saved two lives during a critical emergency. The Morris S. Miller Health Award honors those who demonstrate exceptional bravery, swift action, and collaboration in the face of life-threatening situations. On December 30th, 2024, Robert Bednarik, a resident of Prior Lake, was on his way home when he noticed an unfamiliar vehicle stopped at an unusual angle at a neighborhood intersection. Sensing something was wrong, Robert approached the vehicle and discovered two unresponsive individuals inside struggling to breathe. Fearing possible carbon monoxide poisoning, Robert turned off the vehicle, tilted the seats back, and kept their airways open, and opened the rear cargo hatch to improve ventilation. He immediately called 911 and remained on scene to assist first responders. His calm and decisive actions in those critical moments were instrumental in saving two lives. Deputy Jeff Strack of the Scott County Sheriff's Office was the first to arrive. He quickly assessed the situation and recognized the signs of potential drug overdose. He quickly administered Narcan to both individuals. Deputy Dan Asman soon arrived and provided further support, assisting in administering an additional dose of Narcan and helping remove the passenger from the vehicle. Together, the deputies performed rescue breathing and continued lifesaving measures alongside the Prior Lake Fire Department personnel. Firefighters from Prior Lake Fire Department, including Nick Haugen, Jim Hosinski, Thomas, Joe Akam, Sam Sampi, and Mike Pientka, played a vital role in emergency response. They provided rescue breathing, assisted administering Narcan, and worked tirelessly with deputies until ambulance arrived. Sam Sampi and Thomas Joe Akam further assisted by riding with a line of medics, ensuring continued care during the transport to St. Francis Regional Medical Center. Assistant Chief Jim Rozitschka and Captain Daryl Jelly effectively coordinated fire departments' efforts, ensuring seamless collaboration throughout the response. The following awards are presented for their outstanding actions during this lifesaving incident. The Morris S. Miller Health Hero Award nominees, citizen Robert Bednarik, Scott County Sheriff's Office deputies Jeffrey Strack and Dan Asman, Prior Lake Fire Department staff members, Assistant Chief Jim Rozitschka, Captain Gerald Jelly, firefighter Nick Haugen, firefighter Jim Hosinski, firefighter Thomas Joe Akam, firefighter Sam Sampi, and firefighter Mike Pientka. The reason for this award nomination is the swift and selfless actions of Robert Bednarik, combined with the skilled and coordinated response of the Scott County Sheriff's Office, Prior Lake Fire Department, directly resulted in the survival and recovery of two individuals. Their dedication, professionalism, and willingness to go above and beyond exemplify the very spirit of the Morris S. Miller Health Hero Award. Today, we honor their outstanding service and express our deepest gratitude for their lifesaving actions.
Awesome, thank you, thanks so much for that presentation.
And then we'll just read one off individually, we'll do photos individually, and then have the group kind of stay up here after the side, and we'll do one of the group photo. Okay, say it again. Mr. Robert Bednarik.
Do I, yeah, do I do a?
Deputy Dan Asman.
Well, that was a fun presentation, swift action from a community member and saving the day, likely saving two lives. So, thank you, thank you so much for that. Public safety, we, we need you. All right, moving on to item number seven, the consent agenda. These are items that will pass in one motion and generally are non-controversial in nature, so I will read through those items. 7.1, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-84, authorizing entering an agreement with Jackson Township for County Highway 69 and 115th Street Intersection Streetlights. 7.2, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-88, authorizing entering into a contract with safety signs for a county highway sign replacement project. 7.3, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-102, approving a rezone of 81.66 acres from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to A3 Agricultural Preservation Density District, David and Connie O'Brien applicants and property owners. 7.4, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-103, authorizing entering into an agreement with McMonigal Architects for Law Enforcement Center projects. 7.5, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-104, authorizing application for community living infrastructure grant funds, and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Services. 7.6, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-106, authorizing renewal of limited use permit Number 7005-0012 with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation. 7.7, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-111, approving a conditional use permit amendment to add 37 acres and expand outside storage lot by 2.6 acres, Paul and Cheryl Doucette applicants and Bluff Side Properties LLC and Doucette Family Holdings LLC property owners. 7.8, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-113, approving the final plat of Valley View Industrial Park and Three Way Developers Agreement, JMH Land Development Company LLC applicant and Jordan Gravel LLC property owner. 7.9, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-125, authorizing application for a Minnesota Trail Assistance Grant for 2025, 2026, and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. 7.10, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-126, approving Dakota County joining the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Board of Commissioners. 7.11, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-128, acknowledging receipt and acceptance of gifts to Scott County. 7.12, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-130, authorizing final payment to Peterson Companies, Inc., for the Spring Lake, Lakefront Development Project. 7.13, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-131, approving an amendment to Scott County zoning ordinance number three, Chapter Seven, Specialty Housing to modify the max, maximum size and placement of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. 7.14, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-134, setting a public hearing for May 20th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. to receive public comment on an off, on-off sale, combined intoxicating liquor license for Ferguson's Minnesota Harvest Orchards LLC in St. Lawrence Township. 7.15, Approved Payroll Processing of Personnel Actions. Those are the 15 items on today's consent agenda. Are there any, anything anyone would like to pull or change, or any of those fun things? Otherwise, I will look for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for those 15 items, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, yes, I don't want to pull anything, just want to make comments on two things. First, a real easy one, 7.1, just want to thank staff for working with Jackson Township on that streetlight. It really is important for pedestrians and bicycles crossing from the trailer court there over, across the highway, and I think a really good solution came together on that. And then I just want to comment a minute on 7.8, our approving the final plat and the Three Way Developers Agreement, and I know I've had a lot of conversation with citizens and stakeholders in the past few days about that. Obviously, there's still some concerns from the neighborhood and neighbors, so there's people who wish this would have went a different way, but there's also people who like how this is, is going along. I want to just call out that I received the developers' agreement yesterday and really reviewed that thoroughly, and I, I think it's a very, frankly, a very robust agreement that, that addresses a lot of the concerns, especially the concerns about the safety, road safety, and the traffic, and, and so I see a lot of the stakeholders in the room, want to thank them for that. And, and I think really, it's just going to be incumbent on us during construction processes, especially in light of accidents in construction zones over the past days, that we're just really cognizant of, of what we've agreed to there and, and making it work for the people who live there, travel through, and for the, the developer. So, those are my comments, because people have been reaching out to me, I didn't want to ignore that, but that's all, not pulling it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on those 15 items, any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, consent agenda is passed. All right, we will move on to item number 8.1, Receive Information on the Scott County Mental Health Local Advisory Council and Their Priorities. Welcome, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dale Lumer, and I'm a resident of Prior Lake, and I'm the current chairperson of the Scott County Local Mental Health Advisory Council, and that'll be referred to as the LAC.
Thank you very much.
The LAC is appointed by the Scott County Commissioners with the purpose of gaining knowledge and insight from a broad range of people who use mental health services, provide services, or are concerned about public policy to find ways to improve local mental health options. Our duties include making recommendations to the county board regarding services provided by the local mental health system, along with assessing information about what services are available and how to access them. In 2024, the LAC continued to focus on topics that supported community mental health efforts. One thing that is evident this past year is the strong collaboration between partners in the community and the commitment to supporting and enhancing the mental health system. This can be demonstrated by our commitment to hearing the experiences and stories from those with lived experiences in mental health. This past year, the LAC has discussed ways to formalize a process for eliciting feedback from individuals with these lived experiences and supporting those individuals in being trained in NAMI's In Our Own Voice Program. As an LL, as an LAC, we recognize the importance of community-led initiatives and environments such as the Family Resource Center and NAMI that provide support for our such as the Family Resource Center and NAMI, that provide support for our community members. In addition to the growth in community-led engagement, our LAC has a solid membership with committed residents and professionals, and continues to receive requests for membership from new partners. In alignment with the county board priorities, the LAC has identified the following areas that require consideration and improvement as we move into the next year. In March of 2023, Scott County Health and Human Services launched a new program in partnership with our local law enforcement entitled Coordinated Response. In this program, mental health professionals respond to referrals from law enforcement. Law enforcement is trained to identify potential health, mental health concerns when responding to a call. Coordinated Response is structured to provide a follow-up home visit to children, families, and adults after the initial police visit. Current law enforcement partners are the Scott County Sheriff's Office, including the Scott County Jail, Savage Police Department, and Shakopee Police Department. This year, Coordinated Response will be expanding to provide services to all law enforcement jurisdictions in the county. The program is funded through a berated funding stream, including insurance revenue, state grant funding, and opioid settlement dollars. The LAC wishes to support this expansion and the allocation of resources for the program. Staffing shortages in healthcare have been an increasing concern over the past several years. The result of these staff shortages has caused statewide closings of some of our direct care resources, such as nursing homes, group homes, and children's mental health beds. These closures put a strain on the entire healthcare and mental health system. The LAC strongly supports the development of the Scott County Integrated Health Center, as this facility will fill a gap in our continuum, intensive outpatient mental health and substance use disorders services. Our hope is that this facility helps to decrease ER visits and keeps some facilities, and keeps individuals in the community, excuse me. Despite this resource, there continues to be gaps in the areas of residential and inpatient service. While some facilities have remained open, capacity and quality have been impacted. The constant staff turnover and understaffing results in an inability to serve the community need. More work needs to be done regarding engaging the workforce population to enter the mental health field and receive fair compensation, also providing crisis urgent care facilities with much-needed increase in fiscal reimbursement for services conducted, including mental health services. Housing affordability and accessibility remain an issue for those in need in Scott County. This is especially true for those who live with a mental illness or other disability. Additional public advocacy for affordable housing and services intended to support those experiencing homelessness or housing instability in our communities is an area of interest for the LAC. There are a number of metrics that are regularly reviewed associated with housing instability. Our regional coordinated entry system, which serves as the process used to equitably distribute homeless dedicated housing resources, has maintained a monthly average of just over 58 households awaiting housing resources who are experiencing literal homelessness and have identified Scott County as their county of primary residence over the past year. On average, 64% of those households identify living with disabilities. Over a similar period, eviction filings have occurred at an average rate of 18 filings per month. The LAC encourages the continued pursuit of solutions for those seeking housing and assistance to sustain their housing. The LAC meets every other month during the year, and I think currently Commissioner Brennan is a regular attendee, and in the past Commissioner Breckie, and I think Mr. Wolf and Mr. Beer have shown up also. We really appreciate your support as we go on.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
I would, Mr. Chair, I'd just say no questions, just thank you for the report. I know that we have, I really appreciate the LAC because of the varied involvement from all over the county and all kinds of arenas. So, thank you for that work, and pass on our thanks to the members who do this, who meet, who really dive into the subjects, so.
What is the, because that tends to ebb and flow as far as the number of participants, number of members, but it's a large cross-section of the community.
Yes, it is. I think the, I would say the non-professional members range between six and 12, and then at any given meeting, I would say there's at least 10, if not up to 15 or 16 professionals from the county, and that includes several people from law enforcement. That one, one at least is always on the committee, and I believe last month, there was probably three law enforcement professionals there. And I think on the mental health side, at least five or six on a regular basis, and depending on, you know, each, each meeting, we get several people from specific sources outside the, within the community, within the county, that come and present something. So, we get extra people that may be interested in something like that as well.
That's good. It's good to have a good cross-section.
Yeah, and whatever room that we've used here, last time, it was absolutely full. Every, every chair in the room was filled with someone, whether they were on the committee or whether they were doing a presentation.
Community engagement. Love it. Love it. Thank you so much. Any numbers, any other questions? All right, thank you.
I do want to mention that the, in, in the residents' report, there was a nice, nice write-up on the mental health services within the community, so.
I know those are hitting mailboxes or already have. I've seen them out and about. Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to move on to item number 8.2 and receive a financial update for Q1 2025. Mr. Jones, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, I'm here to go through both the year-end results for 2024, and then also the first quarter forecast for 2025.
Only if they're good.
Okay. Well, one's good. How about that?
Okay, all right.
So, looking at our 2024 financial results, we are, okay, thank you. We ended the financial year to a positive $8.2 million, and our largest driver of that increase to our fund balance is within our countywide impacts area, and that's where we specifically bring in our investment income. With the higher investment rates that are out there, and then also having our ARPA dollars, we were able to earn a substantial amount of investments in 2024. And in addition to the investment earnings, we also have vacancy savings, because baked into the 2024 budget was the feathering in of some ARPA positions, so that in 2025, we wouldn't see a tax impact, but it did provide us savings in 2024. The next largest area for us is in the Planning and Resource Management area with a favorable $942,000. This is primarily from the Environmental Services area, so it's their grants and the special assessments, which these funds are all restricted for those programs, but it also includes the $400,000 that we're putting towards the Dakota Collaborative for the facility. Outside of that, the next area is Health and Human Services. We're showing an unfavorable $382,000. Timing was a big reason for this one. The state eliminated the funding for the case management. We put employees towards men choices, but unfortunately, there's a time study that's done. The employees were not in place and time for the time study, and that's how some of the funding comes across. So, upfront, we don't, we didn't get the funding, but we will in the future in that area. The other thing that has happened in the Health and Human Services area is, as you may recall, we increased the per diem rate at the JAF. At the time, we were told by other counties that it would have no impact. They would still use the facility. What we have noticed is some of the counties did reduce the usage of our JAF facility. So, we did see a reduction in our revenue there. And then, the last item is, we've had more medical leaves within different positions within Health and Human Services, which has also caused a reduction in our revenue since the actual services were not provided in that, in that manner. The, the next area would be the County Attorney's Office, another unfavorable of $325,000. Primary reasons here are state fees and fines came in under budget, but then we also had increased usage of dedicated fund balance towards, towards the choose-not-to-use program. So, we had a lot, we had more programming in the schools using up some of that fund, which here shows us a negative impact, but they truly are dedicated funds. Next area is, we have Office of Management and Budget, favorable $294,000. This is primarily from vacancies in our IT area that, unfortunately, for the worksite, we didn't have project managers for a lot of the year, causing other savings in this, in this area. The next largest area is Transportation Services, and this is primarily due to the mild winter that we experienced. So, we had savings in both sand salt and overtime of our, of our drivers, since they didn't have to be out there with the limited snow that we received. And then, the other one I'll bring up is, the Sheriff's Office did end up with a favorable $154,000, and that primarily is due to the jail revenue coming in over budget with the outside boarding, and it covered for the salaries that they had. Are there any questions on the year-end results? With, with those year-end results, it actually moved our, well, it moved our fund balance up $8 million. So, we had our settlement in 2023, as you may recall, and now, after 23 results and 24 results, we have fully recovered from that, and we're actually higher than what we were back in 2022. So, we are within that range that the state auditors provides for a guideline of 35% to 50% of operating expenses. Our unassigned and assigned fund balance comes at, comes in at 37% at this time. And the yellow within this chart, we do not include, because those are restricted funds, like the Environmental Services or Environmental Health and Land Records. Next item is, I'll move on to the 2025 first-quarter projections. At this time, it's always hard to project where we're going to be at the end of the year, just with reversals of accruals and that for year-end, but this year especially is difficult, as everyone's aware, with both the state and the federal government. What we're looking at right now is, on a favorable side, we still have higher interest rates, so we're still bringing in quite a bit, quite a bit of interest income. But on the concern side, we have the state budget uncertainty. Latest projection was a $6 billion deficit for the 2028-29 biennium. And then, with the state looking at both cost shifts to local governments, and then also reductions to programs, but it's still very uncertain what direction they're going to go within their budget, and with the legislative session scheduled on May 19th, hopefully, we know sooner rather than later, but more than likely, it'll extend out. And then, on the federal budget, we're looking there that, again, it's looking like there will be substantial reductions to our different programs. At this time, it's hard to tell where it's going to be. So, in, within Scott County, we are taking measures to help address some of the issues that could be coming upon us. The first one we have is reviewing our staff vacancies. A board is being put together that will review vacancies as they occur to determine if the vacancies can be held, held open for a period of time, causing savings within those areas. We are also evaluating the capital projects to determine which projects could be delayed for, for savings there. And then, the last area are, is that divisions are looking at discretionary spending to see what could truly be held back at this time to, to help offset some of these future impacts. And then, moving on to our first-quarter investment reviews. Again, Scott County is holding the majority of our funds in real short-term maturities. So, 91% of our investments are in lengths of zero to two years, with 63% of our investments in money markets and 20% in government agencies. So, very short-term, secure investments at this time. And then, looking at the yield curve from, this is showing from December 31st of 2015 is the blue line. Gray line is the investment rates back on December 31st of '24, and the black line is where the investment rates, March 31st. The short-term rates between one, one month and six months have stayed flat, but the rates from one year to 30 years have slight, have slightly decreased. And then, looking at the individual investments themselves, we have the six-month U.S. Treasury rates for the past 10 years. Again, this is showing that the rates stayed relatively flat over the past three months, still on the high side from where they've been for the past 10 months, or past 10 years, but slightly down from the past year. And then, the last slide is looking at the 10-year U.S. Treasuries. This is where we're seeing over the last quarter, a slight decline of approximately 3/4 of a percent, or, sorry, 3/10 of a percent in the 10-year Treasury, but still higher than what it's been over the course of the past 10 years. With that, are, are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Numbers, any questions? You're the numbers guy, so you're saying there's some uncertainty.
Yes.
Okay. Does it seem a little more uncertain these days than past years?
Marcel and I have a recall, yes.
I'm kind of taking that poll, and that's the answer I've been getting, yes.
Except, I guess it's not as uncertain that more than likely, we'll have a budget impact of a hit, but yes. To what extent?
We're certain about that. Oh, you are just full of good news today. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Steve, hang on one sec. Back on one of those, I think the first slide, the plowing and stuff, we were way less than we had thought we were going to be.
Which one?
Like plowing the roads and all that stuff.
I think it was 238.
So, we saved $238. How much does it cost per typical snowfall to plow the roads? Does anybody, maybe Steve doesn't know.
I don't know that offhand, sorry.
He can find it, yeah.
We actually, you know, do track it by storm and the hours and the salt use. We could pull it, but it varies by storm, right? So, if you have a three or four-day event.
Average storm, is it 50 or 100? I don't even know.
I couldn't give it to you off the top of my head, but we can get that, Commissioner.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to 8.3, looking at adopting a resolution number 2025-120. I guess we're just going to wait to read that until we hear the presentation. Nikki, welcome. Good morning.
Okay.
Is it still morning? It is morning. I have to check.
It is, yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I am Nikki Halberg, the Child and Family Services Director, of Scott County. So, I am looking, we are seeking board approval today in extending our school attendance support grant with the Catalasso Group. We currently have a grant with the Sauer Family Foundation for this service, which is truancy prevention and our restorative circle, justice circles. Our proposal's for a three-year grant that would extend this service through the school year of '27-'28. Next year, the grant would be for $80,000. Next year, the, the grant would be for eighty thousand dollars and then slowly declining based on the Catalasso Group implementing members of our community to help and school personnel to help with restorative circles. So this, this service is part of our child well-being continuum, which is really looking at how do we increase our prevention services in Scott County to help reduce our deep-end services in child protection and in child welfare. The Catalasso Group is one of our early intervention programs in regards to child welfare responses. And it's a partnership through the PATH program. So our partnership is with Treehouse and the Catalasso Group for our PATH program, which is promoting attendance through hope. This program started in the 2022, 23 school year. And it's two contracted positions, one full-time funded by CARES Funding through Scott County and then also one full-time position through our Sauer Family Foundation grant. The Catalasso Group started in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the PATH, which is funded by the Sauer Family Foundation. And the PATH program provides truancy prevention programming aimed at connecting and reconnecting the student and family and school and to uncover the root causes of school absenteeism and prevent, and preventing need for deep-end services. These referrals are made by the school through an integrated website. So the Catalasso Group is staffed with volunteers who are trained under the Minnesota Practice 114 as an alternative dispute resolution provider. So typically, it's the first intervention we have for children ages twelve and older to address school attendance concerns. They're involved in supporting the schools and really developing a plan with the students, support, a support plan using restorative circles. And the goal is increasing school attendance and preventing the need for more intensive services, but also reconnecting students to their schools that they're, they're in and how, how the family can get reconnected with the school as well. Through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Catalasso Group received three hundred and four referrals. And they reported a success rate of fifty-five percent of youth that significantly improved school attendance, while nearly fifteen per student showed moderate improvement in attendance. So this translates into seventy percent of students who were referred to this program had successful outcomes of re-engaging with the school and their peers. So for this school year and the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we currently, through March, had two hundred referrals. And that was pretty similar results on tracking attendance and improving school attendance. There's just a look at the outcomes of fifty percent that have significantly improved school attendance. So as we look at for children's services and child protection and child welfare, implementing the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation and Child Disproportionality, Child Welfare Disproportionality Act, it's really about how do we increase our community engagement and our community interventions while also reducing our deep-end services. This is just a look here at our twenty-four placement, out-of-home placement numbers, which is eighty-six, which is the lowest that we've seen. And we are consistently low the last few years through, the lowest in the state in our out-of-home placements. And I think that the other, the one, the other slide that doesn't seem to be in the slideshow here is our referrals for truancy. So right now we have thirty-one referrals, which is slightly higher than we talked about at our, at our board meeting a few weeks ago, which is really the piece of sometimes at the end of the school year, we'll get kind of a bulk of students who have been missing school or individuals that maybe Treehouse has looked at engaging and hasn't been able to. And so then we get kind of a bulk of services, of referrals from them. But we are currently at thirty-one for our truancy referrals, which is the lowest that we've seen in Scott County.
All right, because that does kind of pair with the school year for the most part, right? So.
Right.
Any questions?
I have some comments, but I'll go ahead and, and move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one-twenty, authorize an application for a school attendance support grant. And if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Sauer Family Foundation, amending the twenty twenty-five budget and approving a contract amendment with the Catalasso Group.
Second?
Motion and a second, and now discussion.
Thank you. Thanks, Nikki. I, I think this was kind of the second, second phase of, of some information about that since we had such a robust workshop two weeks ago on, on this subject too. And really interesting to hear the Catalasso Group talk about their change in structure to be using school personnel, community personnel. Seems like a wonderful outcome, that, that we've made some investment, we're helping support this and then, and then moving off to the community. I guess my only comment is, let's make sure we, we track that as, as that format changes, as that work's being done by others, because we still care. I mean, we, we hope we're kind of out, you know, kind of out of the picture. We have less kids coming to our county attorney's office. But let's make sure as we do that, that step down, that we, we track that hopefully long-term success. So thank you for that. It just, it seems like a, a perfect outcome.
How, how does this particular resolution, does, does it complement, interact with what we heard with the Shakopee schools? The truancy op, I don't know what the right.
Or grant to them.
Yeah, is, is, this is just a complimentary tract for?
It is. I think as we, as we really looked at like our school attendance as a whole, how can we put pieces in every school and at every step of, of engagement? So our school attendance program at the Shakopee schools has really been directed to that middle school, which seems to be a little bit of the, the missing link as we have elementary schools and we have this program which really provides, like teachers are really involved in those younger kids and then their truancy program. And sometimes there's this misconnect about who's responsible a little bit for these middle, middle-aged kids. So I think that that program really addresses kids having an individual at the school to connect with. But the Catalasso Group has been an important part of that work because Madeline, who is our school attendance personnel, will work with the Catalasso Group and, and help coordinate some of those restorative justice circles. And I think that's where this, this idea came from of how do we also train our school personnel? Because I think Madeline's had some interest in how she herself can do some of that work with families. So it's been an important part of helping her work.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, there was a motion. There was a second, I believe. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that resolution has passed. Moving on to eight point four to receive information on the county state aid highway mileage request. And here comes the team. Good morning, Tony.
Good morning, Tony Winnicky, Scott County Highway Engineer. Mr. Chair, members of the board. So we do want to share information with you today. I think it'll pop up, there it is, about the county state aid highway mileage request. So exciting news. So this is good. It doesn't hap, it doesn't happen often. So we do want to talk about that today and kind of what we're requesting here and provide some information and hopefully get your support to do so. Let's see here. There we go. So why are we making a mileage request now? So the, the big impetus is the CASA eight extension from Trunk Highway twenty-one westward into Belle Plaine. And we currently have that programmed in our current tip, our ten-year tip right now. So that's kind of the big driver with this and the timing of that happening. We also have a new alignment on County Highway fifteen in New Prague that we've been working with the city on that for some time and have made changes down there. And with that, it's just really a good time to evaluate other needs and, and request that to the screening board and really kind of a phased approach. That's typical, it's typical and preferred to do it that way. So, so some of these roadways may not happen immediately, but it really shows that we've looked at our system and have a plan with that. So it's really to establish the right long-term highway system and then apportionment funding accordingly with that. And we've got a deadline of August first to submit that to the screening board. So a little background, the county highway CASA system was established in nineteen fifty-seven. And at that time, it was capped at thirty thousand miles across the, the state. That's since been removed with requests like this coming in. So the, the mileage and segment needs are components of the CASA funding, Minnesota Highway Users Distribution Fund. And so no increase in mileage is permitted without approval from the county screening board. And so there's been, since that time, since fifty-seven, there's been over seven hundred miles that were added to the, the statewide system by a request similar to the process that we would like to go through at this time. Of that seven hundred-plus miles, about half of that happened in the first decade since fifty-seven. And then really it's kind of slowed down since then. And there's been only three requests in the last fifteen years. The last one being in twenty twenty by one of our metro counties. The CASA designation is part of the, the MINDAT rules for state aid operation. And in general, is a, to, to become a county state aid highway, it generally carries the higher traffic roadways. It's the, the collectors and arterials. It connects your towns and shipping points and markets and schools and churches and things of that nature. And really provides an integrated corridor highway system throughout the county and, and adjoining counties as well. So additional requirements, the CASA segments must connect to other CASA roadways or a municipal state aid street or a trunk highway segment on each end. If there's changes in that, there's a twenty-five, a, a ten-year for rehab project or a twenty-five for reconstruction. So if we had a roadway that was designated as a CASA roadway and then we did something with that, we changed that, funding that, stated funding that we use, there'd be a, a portion of payback if that's no longer on a CASA roadway. So segments approved are part of the previous mileage request and cannot be used elsewhere. And then any additions, revisions, revocations of that CASA system must be approved by resolution by a municipality. So the, the mileage request process, so we, like I said, we've got a submitted request by August first. And then it goes to a, a county and state mileage subcommittee for review. And that's comprised of fifteen county engineers across the state. And then we will either do a presentation, a tour across our county, whatever we determine that is to, to show them what our request is. And then they'll do a review based on really a statewide comparison of other CASA systems around the state. And then the additional mileage, we really have to defend why we're adding these to the system and what that means for the county here. And typically as part of that, you know, we've got to make a request such that we're willing to negotiate some of these as well. We may not get everything we asked for. So we've got to be kind of thoughtful in our approach, which we think we, we are. And then oftentimes, it's a phased approach. It may not happen all right now, but it's out in the future far enough that it's a, it's a logical phased plan. And then again, the county and cities will have to pass a resolution to pass this once it goes through the screening board in the fall. So our current system, we've got two hundred and thirty CASA miles. We've got five hundred and seventy-six lane miles. So two-lane roadway, two lanes, four-lane four. Our county road system is, is seventy-nine miles and a hundred and fifty-nine lane miles. As you can see down below here is kind of a history of our mileage request. So from nineteen fifty-seven, the first forty years, we had fifty, close to fifty-nine miles that were requested. And in here, some of this is, could be trunk highway turnback as well, like one-on-one in sixty-nine in Shakopee that was a turnback from MINDAT's old one sixty-nine. So we really haven't kept pace. If you look what we originally had and then our additional requests in the first forty years, but since our last request was in eighteen ninety-seven, that was apportionment started in nineteen ninety-eight. Since that time, we haven't had any requests. So we really haven't, haven't kept pace with our, with our growth. And so here you can look, our population has quadrupled in the last fifty years. From nineteen seventy-five, about thirty-nine thousand people to now about a hundred and fifty-six thousand people. So pretty huge jump, eighty-three thousand new people in the county. Jobs have tripled in the last thirty-five years from nineteen ninety to two thousand and twenty-four. So a pretty substantial jump there as well. And then the entertainment venues that we have, everything from Mystic Lake to Valley Fair to Canterbury to Ren Fest, to all of our awesome restaurants and things like that. So we have a lot of visitors that are coming in here. So things have really changed a lot in the last, you know, twenty years, let alone thirty or fifty years. So this is our current CASA funding. And this is a, the, so the, the five-year average on the bottom is just over eleven million dollars this year. Is over twelve million dollars in CASA distribution, forty percent maintenance, sixty percent construction. And this is based on a statutory formula based on lane miles, vehicle registration, and then construction needs. So a lot goes into that, but this is the money that we're taking in at this time. So did I miss one here? So this is the county highway system. The, the red lines represent the CASA routes and that tan color represents our county roads. So you can see the grid system that we have out there. And this is really kind of consistent with spacing through the Met Council Functional Classification and consistent with our comp plan. Here's Met Council's functional classification roadmap. So the, the red on this one is principal arterials and then the other colors are, are minor arterials or collector roadways. And so again, it represents, this is very consistent with what we have vetted out in our comprehensive plan, of which this, this map here is our future functional class. What we're really driving toward, so one of the gentlemen got up and spoke today about CASA seventeen. And this shows that we've vetted this out and determined throughout along this corridor that this will be a principal arterial roadway. So we're building toward that. And so typical for principals, you'd have spacing in the, maybe in the urban areas of one to two miles. In the rural areas, you'd have spacing of, say, six to twelve miles, something like that. So what we have identified here and vetted out really, really is that. And then the minor arterials, you know, would be in that, you know, mile spacing in the urban areas and might be in the two to three miles in the, in the rural areas. And then this identifies the, again, in the comp plan, the unprogrammed roadways or system needs that we have for continuity. And so with this request, with this request, we are addressing a few of these here, namely the extension of, of County Road eight down in New Prague. The fifteen, we've already addressed a few of those, thirty-seven and part of fifteen down there. Up in Savage twenty-seven, we identified some time ago about the extension of that. That, that didn't happen, but we did identify that as a, as a need. And then here's our, our transportation sales tax, again, okay, passed in, in twenty twenty-two and identifies the extension of County Road eight. That's Project Twelve identified down in Belle Plaine Township in Belle Plaine. So identified the importance of that roadway from a funding standpoint for the good of the county. Okay, so we do want to go through our, our specific segments here and what we would like to request. And so here's an. Oh, this isn't on my screen anymore.
We are working with our new updated technology.
Yeah.
This, this.
So it's just not on my screen here. So as she's doing that, I, just got to give it some love here, huh? There we go. Okay, little touch. So this is, this is overall, and I'll go through each of these segments in a little bit more detail. But this is the additions, removals that we're talking about here. So starting with A, that's the, the extension of, of County Road eight, CASA eight. And that's about a seven-mile segment from existing twenty-one, Highway, Trunk Highway twenty-one that connects Jordan down to New Prague over to Belle Plaine. And this is important from a system-wide approach. Has really big impact on the connection east-west across the county between one sixty-nine and thirty-five. The next addition is B, which is the extension of, of CASA twelve westward to CASA fifteen. And that's about a two-and-a-half-mile segment. And then C is down in New Prague, and that is the CASA fifteen alignment. And we have done some work down there, getting rid of the fifteen that kind of goes through New Prague right now. And then thirty-seven, that was kind of a loop between Trunk Highway twenty-one and nineteen in that area. And so I'll go through that in a second here. And then D is the, is converting County seventy-nine to a CASA roadway. And that is from the southern limit at CASA ten, almost ten miles up to the existing Tenth Avenue in Shakopee. And then removals is E, which is CASA four down in Belle Plaine Township in Helena. And that would happen as a phasing plan when eight is completed or the first leg of eight is completed. And so it kind of eliminates that redundancy there. And then F is in Shakopee and a portion of that is in Prior Lake as well. And then F is in Shakopee, and a portion of that is in Prior Lake as well, a small portion on the southern part of that. And with that project, and we've we've long talked about revoking this roadway and turning it back to the city when trunk or CASA Twenty-One was built from forty-two north up to one sixty-nine, or I should say to the existing twenty-one and eighteen intersection since that to the north to one sixty-nine was already old eighteen. So we've long talked about that since two thousand and nine, that that would that would happen. We'd retain that small section in between. There's about a quarter mile between the the north-south intersections of sixteen and eighteen, so we'd retain that and re-designate that as CASA Sixteen, so we maintain the continuity of sixteen across the across the county. So just kind of briefly on each of these segments here, like I mentioned, CASA Eight is a major east-west connection. It is a future principal arterial, so we're guiding it toward that with right-of-way preservation, design considerations that we would build into the project. So we we have that functionality long term. It's about seven miles long. We are starting to look at design activities this year, and then over the next several years, we'll start to begin right-of-way acquisition. And we've got this in the program scheduled for construction in twenty thirty-one and twenty twenty-three. And so by adding miles now at this time, we'd be able to use stated funds for design right-of-way and construction. We just don't get the needs that we would draw on that from a funding standpoint until the roadway is actually built. Okay, this is just a little summary of that. I think I went through most of this. Yeah, we're kind of expecting a a long-term ADT of about seven thousand vehicles on this this two-lane roadway. County Road Twelve Extension, so this is in the the Prior Lake Annexation Area. It may be a little difficulty kind of the roads in there, but this is this is around the thirteen-two-eighty-two intersection, so this is the new annexation area. And then a little bit to the north through the CASA Twelve area or to the new CASA Twelve area. So it shows kind of the what's going on. There's our development that has happened there. We're fully expecting a lot more development that's going to happen, and we feel that that extension of CASA Twelve over to Mary's Town or or CASA Fifteen will help support in this area. So again, this is about a two and a half mile segment. Part of it is a gravel road out there right now. So we would anticipate this being part of this ask as well. And and again, it's got to connect to a CASA, so it's got to go all the way over to CASA Fifteen. Fifteen, this would be on new alignment, so we worked with the city for some time. They've had a long desire for this to happen, Alton Avenue down there. You can see in the upper right on that figure that east-west segment of existing fifteen, that would go away, and it would be the new alignment straight south down to trunk highway thirteen in that area and anticipating about seventy-three hundred vehicles a day on that roadway, and this would be a A minor arterial roadway. Okay, CASA Four in Belle Plaine Township in Helena, this is a two-mile segment of roadway, and as I mentioned, this would this would be eliminated when a section or all of CASA Eight is completed at that time. So that would be a reduction. So that's where that's located. CASA Eighteen, again, this is the the four-lane section from CASA Twenty-One down to forty-two. So we had retained that quarter mile between sixteen, and this might be a timing project as well. We've got a a sixteen project going on that'll be led to this year for next year's construction. That does take take care of the southern intersection, so we'll make that a three-quarter intersection. We don't have it in our tip, but we're planning to put a intersection improvement to the northern intersection, and then we've committed to a trail project along Eighteen as well. So Shakopee and Prior Lake are aware of these activities, so. And then CASA One and Sixty is in Blakely Township, and One is a the westernmost roadway, and that's currently a CASA, that's about two point seven miles. And County Road Sixty is about two point five miles, and both of these were affected by the flood damage in two thousand and fourteen and partial reconstruction of those roadways at that time. Our desire is to swap that, so because County Road Sixty becomes the CASA and CASA One becomes the county road. Sixty is a more direct route from one sixty-nine straight across the the river crossing into Sibley County. So, yeah, so neither of these roadways carry a very high volume of traffic, but it does lead to an important river crossing. They're both two-lane rural collector roads on our system. And then I think I I think, okay. So overall, this is our this is our mileage request. If you look at all of those, on top are the additions and the mileage, so between Eight, the extension of Twelve, the Fifteen addition, the Sixty addition and the Seventy-Nine addition is just is twenty-nine or twenty-two point six-five additional miles. And then the subtractions would be what you see there on CASA Four, Fifteen, Eighteen, and then One. And then we do have a small portion of banked miles of one point one eight, so all of that nets a difference of a request of thirteen point eight miles to add to our system. And then this would be the the phasing plan like I talked about. So several of these would happen immediately, and then some of these would happen at a little bit future date. And the the phasing, so they are looking for this. This is, you know, that we've looked at the system as a whole and when these might additions and subtractions take place. Again, noting that any new roadways, like what happens on Eight and Twelve and Fifteen, we don't draw the the funding dollars for those until the roadways are actually built. So scheduled activities, we'll be discussing these formally with the cities over the next with Belle Plaine, New Prague, Prior Lake, Shakopee over the next couple of months. We'll be looking for a letter of acknowledgement from them. We will submit our request to the to state age, state aid, this mileage request in July. It's due August first. And then a mileage subcommittee meets in August with us. And then we will have a full screening board decision in October, and then city and county resolutions would happen anytime after that point. So in conclusion, the our county is has without question has grown significantly since the last request in ninety-seven. We have a small amount of banked miles. We have reviewed our county highway system and feel that this is a reasonable and responsible request to serve the public, believing it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We proposed a phasing implementation plan for this, and we do request your support to submit this request. And then respectfully, we expect the county mileage subcommittee and recommendations from the screening board in the fall. Questions?
Very good. Thank you so much, members. Questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Thanks, Tony. This is this is great, a good, good overview. I'm glad we're seeing it now. Two questions. One, I guess, on the schedule. Obviously, some of these plans go through townships. Is that just not, will you be going to the township meetings and talking to them about them? Do they not need to give letters? What's the what's the story there?
Yeah, we will, we will talk to them as well. I do not believe there's a formal requirement with them, but we will be informing them. Obviously, there's impact to them as well.
Okay, yeah, and since so many are impacted, we may even want to do that at one of our quarterly meetings with the township chairs or something. That'd be a great agenda item, I think.
Good idea, thank you. Yep.
And then two, just I I understand, I'm not going to say much about it because I don't want to get myself in trouble, but I understand the swap with One and Sixty, and we're phasing that in in twenty twenty-five. I'm just assuming that won't harm any possible funding as we work on One and get it ready for whatever changes, turnbacks we're doing. Like, because, you know, we'll have to bring that up to if if we're doing some turnbacks. No? No turnback?
No turnback.
No turnback.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I I think I missed, I I didn't hear you correctly. Yeah, not not a turnback.
Okay.
Simply a swap of designation between CASA and county road.
But I'm asking if the swap of designation will impact any work we have to do as we're working with the township and and looking at the long-term use of One. I mean, are there county, because it's a county aid road now, are there funding sources that would help us in that in that work that won't be available once we swap it out?
Yeah, I do think we have, I think we have to look at that because I do think we have a pavement project
Yeah.
coming with that. So so any project that is a CASA funding is used, there's a timeframe of which you can't make that change.
Right, right. So, yeah, I just I just would, if we should phase it later because of that, I think we should look at that now versus later. Thank you. Otherwise, great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, I think we are good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports and commissioner updates. I will look down to my far right, Commissioner Wexman-Brecke.
Okay, yeah, it's been a lot of time since our last
It has been.
meeting. So I'll just kind of go through quick and highlight a couple of items. April fifteenth was our last meeting. We had a workshop after that meeting, and then later that day, we had the groundbreaking for the Integrated Health Center. Heard lots of positive comments since then from folks at St. Francis and Alina, and there's sure a lot of energy around that, so I hope construction goes well and we get that open on schedule. April seventeenth, had a meeting with the Scott County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Really good meeting, just saying this, you know, our advisory boards are so important, and one of the activities we did at that meeting is Joe Bentley led the whole committee through the same exercise that folks going through cognitive behavioral therapy group would would do. So I think the committee really learned a lot from that exercise. April eighteenth, Scale Executive Committee. April eighteenth, AMC Board Meeting. April twenty-first, Scale Legislative Update. The twenty-first also had the State Mentally Ill and Dangerous Civil Commitment Reform Task Force and the County State Human Services Work Group, both groups that I'm in that right now in this legislative time seems like I'm sometimes working against myself going from one group to the next group, one group looking for funding to, you know, better serve mentally ill and dangerous folks and and decrease costs for counties and then going to our funding shifts. April twenty-one, I joined a few people in this room on a virtual meeting with Senator Port, just trying to keep keep up with her, and it was a good meeting. April twenty-second, we had our county board workshop. I guess just want to shout out to all the folks who made that happen because we sure looked at a lot of nonprofits and partners and others who are part of, you know, we support because they do our work, so it was really a good day. Twenty-third was State Community Supervision Advisory Council. On the twenty-third, also NACO Human Services and Education Committee, our Scott County-Rice County Joint Ditch Board Meeting, and later that day, the County Road Seventeen Project Open House, which great attendance and, as we saw from the beginning of the meeting, good conversation happening. April twenty-fourth, the Belle Plaine Library Expansion Groundbreaking, also Jordan Commercial Club Annual Meeting. April thirtieth, Together Weekend Steering Committee Meeting and AMC Finance Committee Meeting. May first, last Thursday, went to the Treehouse Annual Dinner and fundraiser, really well-attended. Great, great to see so many community members supporting Treehouse, so many volunteers. There was a panel of young folks who attended the Treehouse Support Groups, who gave testimonials. It was a really great event. May second, had a meeting with Pro Act and Southwest Metro School District. I want to speak just a moment on that. Obviously, we remember that Pro Act, we transitioned our new options pro program over to Pro Act out of out of county jurisdiction. It's been a a great, a great move, and we worked to help them get established in the Southwest Metro School District Building with a lease. Well, Southwest Metro School District running out of space, really looking to move Pro Act. So I am going to the Pro Act Board Meeting tonight to at at the executive director's request, just planning on saying we we really, we really hope Pro Act can be be robust and healthy and even growing in Scott County. That was our goal, and I think the administrator, Leslie Vermillion, and some others, and Barb Dahl, have done great work helping look at options and make sure that Pro Act has time to to consider a possible move. So I can report more back after the board meeting. Scale Legislative Update yesterday and Transportation Alliance Board Meeting yesterday. I think that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the sixteenth, had the Insurance Committee Meeting. Still looking at increase on that, and I think we got a little workshop on that today. And then the twenty-second, the workshop and the nonprofits. Also, I had a meeting with the administrator. Later that night, Prior Lake had their city council workshop and meeting, and also Credit River had their twice monthly meeting on theirs. On the twenty-third, the mosquito control district met, and yeah, there was a lot of good information, a really good presentation on the mosquito larvae and all that stuff and how they they spray in their pellets and all that stuff and where that all comes from. So it was a one. And in fact, today is the mosquito control day at the Capitol from ten to two, so I might try to get down there. I don't know. Anyhow, and then the Joint Ditch Board Meeting was also the twenty-third, and then the Public Works, the Open House. And then Cedar Lake Sewer met later that evening. Everything kind of quiet there. On the twenty-fourth, the Vermillion River Joint Powers Organization met. That night, Elko New Market had their twice monthly meeting. I think that meeting was about maybe ten or fifteen minutes. I actually took it on Zoom because I'm like, it's going to take me longer to drive there. Twenty-eighth, I actually met with former administrator Gary Shelton about a few items coming up here at the county. And then yesterday, the Prairie Point Groundbreaking over here in Shakopee. The presentation was actually inside the old KC Hall. I don't know what they call it now, but anyhow, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go down to Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. I I think a lot of what I have to say has already been said. April fifteenth was the Integrated Health Clinic Groundbreaking. April fifteenth was the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District. I also attended on April fifteenth, the Shakopee City Council Meeting. April sixteenth is the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District Meeting. The chair has put together a letter, and I think everybody who received it yesterday, and I forwarded it to Leslie and and Brad Davis to talk about second seat on that district for Scott County, because we do have the largest area in that district.
April seventeenth, I attended the AMC Solid Waste Working Group Committee. Currently, that group is a statewide committee. I think that it should be a regional committee, and I made that recommendation. I think that what we're dealing with here in the metro area is a little bit different than the counties in the larger Minnesota area, especially with the requirement of recycling at seventy-five percent. Let's see, April seventeenth, I attended the library meeting. April eighteenth was the Dakota Scott Workshop Workforce Board Meeting. April twenty-first, I went to the State Capitol and met with Representative Bakberg and Representative Tapke. April twenty-second was the board workshop. April twenty-third, I attended the River Three Rivers Park District State of the Parks Event, and Scott County was highlighted for their part on their parks and the work that's being done there. April twenty-third, I had a meeting with Tony Winicki, and we discussed the Open House regarding Highway Seventeen. April twenty-third, I attended the Open House with everybody, I think everybody else. April twenty-third was, April twenty-fourth was the Belle Plaine Library Groundbreaking. April thirtieth and May first, I attended the April 30th and May 1st, I attended the Solid Waste Conference, the Ram Swama Conference that was held at Mystic Lake and learned. Mostly attended the sessions that had to do with legislation and changes in solid waste. For example, they extended producer responsibility for packaging and how that's going to be affecting waste. Let's see, April 30th, I had a meeting with Shakopee Mayor Lehman. May 5th, I had a meeting with Administrator Vermillion and Sheriff Henon. May 5th, I had a meeting with Lisa Brodsky. And May 5th was the Prairie Point Groundbreaking. I went back through my notes when I was on the city council, and that was approved in June of 2020. So, it's great to see that work is finally happening because it's going to really affect the the lower income and housing for, the housing continuum. So, it was great to see.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ulrich?
Okay, on the 15th, I attended the workshop with the nonprofit presentations, which we had two major rounds of those presentations. And I thought those were really good. Gave us a lot of information, insight into the work of the nonprofits. I probably will be reminded that I said this later, but I think it might be almost a good yearly presentation. Because, you know, things change. It'd be good to get a report. Attended the groundbreaking for the Integrated Health Center. 16th, the Transportation Advisory Board. 18th, the Scale Executive Committee. 21st, Scale Legislative Committee, Scale Service Delivery Committee. That was a big discussion on health insurance. And I would say my impression of the meeting was that jurisdictions still are gathering information. They're, they're still have questions, you know, they're not all 100% sold on the idea. I mean, it's an informational gathering process. So, we just have to let it play out, I think. Fish Executive Committee, that same day. 22nd, round two of the nonprofit presentations, Fish Board on the 23rd. 28th, I'm on a TAB Active Transportation Work Group. There's state funding for active transportation projects, and there's federal funding that is in a similar category. And they're working on developing a process where they're concurrent or to seek these funds, whether it's state or federal, to a concurrent, parallel, but separate process to request these funding, this funding. And there's quite a difference between receiving the state funding versus federal funding in these projects. If it's federal funding, you have all kinds of market requirements, hoops to jump through. It's a more difficult project to bring forward and to complete. And so, but we're trying to work through a process that makes sense. That still takes in the idea of geographic balance in terms of funding. We always on the TAB want to make sure that jurisdictions are receiving a fair share of the funding, that no jurisdiction is receiving more than their share. That principle, one year was absolutely key in us getting funding because we had one project and they didn't want to fund it. And they said, why should we fund that project? And I was able to say, we've always factored in geographic balance on funding. And if you don't fund us, that kind of does away with that principle. That's been a principle for decades, basically. So, that carried the day and we got funding. But anyhow, so that's what's happening there. On the 30th, the MVTA Board Meeting. And Dakota County is rejoining the MVTA Board. We're glad about that. Many of us didn't feel it made sense for them to have withdrawn in the past, but it's good they're coming back, engaging with us. On the 5th, the Scale Legislative Committee. It was pointed out that Angie Craig has announced that she's running for senate. And there's people on probably both sides of the, you know, Republican, Democrat scenario that are filing or not filing, but indicating they're going to run, to seek their party's endorsements. Question I asked was, could an Angie Craig or a state legislator that wanted to run or seek an endorsement could, if they didn't get the endorsement, could they go back to their old, you know, legislative seat or old congressional seat? Yes, that could happen. That's happened in many scenarios in the past where someone sought an endorsement, didn't get it, and then went back. So, there's going to be a lot of back and forth and movement in that category. Mobility Management Board, the same day. We're going to work on changing the name of Smart Link to something else. Apparently, there's been a lot of confusion between Transit Link, which is the Met Council Service, and Smart Link, which is mobility management. And so, people are calling the wrong number or getting connected in the wrong way. So, we have to change the name. New Employee Orientation was this morning, and we had a great group of employees. That's it.
I just have one question. Was there any other announcements coming out from talking about CD2? Was that, was that a pre-announcement? Or was that that you were going to?
You jumping in?
Or I'll look down this way. I didn't know if that was a
No, I was wondering about you.
I didn't know if it was a pre-pre. I'm looking to my left and my right just to see if there's
No.
Mr. Wolf's considering it.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to my committee report. Some of these are, of course, are duplicative. But on the 14th, the Post Board Workshop, also the groundbreaking. I'll just talk about the Integrated Health Center. It was a great, yeah, it's, you know, groundbreaking ceremony, but what a great opportunity. And so many awesome partners coming together to make that happen. You know, that wasn't just a one movement. It was many people coming together, pulling on their hordes in the same direction and bringing that to fruition. So, that was, that was the fun part of that. On the 16th, Administrator Vermillion and I went down to BP to have breakfast with Senator Dreheim. And honestly, that's the most time I've spent with him. And we had really great conversation. He was also very clear that not a lot he can do in the Senate with some of our budget concerns. But it was a, it was just a good time to get to know him a little bit more on a personal level and have him understand us a little bit more and what we're looking for and the why, why we're looking for many of the things. So, appreciated that time. Thank you, Senator. 18th, AMC Board, which a big subject to that. Guess what? Cost shifts, of course. We're all really trying to hit the bullseye on that and with our messaging and helping St. Paul understand the why, why we're asking for so many of these things to be funded at the state level and not dropped into our laps. More about that later. 21st, Scale Service Delivery. I was in there briefly before we headed off to the Capitol. This was talked about. We were able to speak with Representative Bakberg, Representative Tapke. Later that day, I met virtually with Senator Port, as others did. The conversation in the Capitol with our Representative Bakberg and Tapke is a lot of the same. Nobody, at that point, that was, you know, a couple of weeks ago, which is, seems like an eternity in political time. Lot of uncertainty, more uncertainty. Some say the big numbers in the out years don't really matter because it could be a new crew in, at the House, at the Senate. But for budgeting purposes, we need to have a little bit better than that. So, there, I appreciate their willingness to talk. They've always been willing to have discussions with us, and I appreciate that. But we just need more than good discussions. On the 22, sorry, 422 Board Workshop that was discussed with our partners, it was a couple goes at that. It was a great way of really getting through some folks and understanding them better and getting them to understand what we're looking for. Later that night, Prior Lake held their city council meeting. 23rd, MMCD, mosquitoes are in the air. I think I swatted one the other day. I will also double down. There is a great interactive piece on the website, the Mosquito Control District. If you have a wetland, if you have a whatever, that you're wondering if, has this ever been treated? Has it ever even been checked? And I said, I want to see this firsthand. And there's a pond not far from my house. It's been dip netted like multiple times for multiple years, and it's never been treated because it's never met the threshold. Like, there's no skeets in there. I'm like, that is crazy. But I, I just, it was a really great tool to see. So, that's available online. Try it, yes.
I had a similar but different outcome experience. We have a water retention pond.
Yeah, yeah.
And they assured us that that's on there. Well, I went on their map and it wasn't on.
Ah, nice.
And it got, it is on there.
Yes. It's exactly, it serves both of those purposes. Especially as, you know, things shift and change and, you know, new developments tend to get on there. But if in doubt, go to the website, MMCD. I don't know, what is it? Google it, you'll find it and look for that portion of the website. It's very informative. Let's see, later that, I guess, afternoon on the 23rd, Fish Board Meeting. Later that evening, County Road 17 Open House. And that was a great exchange of great passion. I think our highway folks did a great job of explaining the why. Where they could. It was an open house. It wasn't a presentation. So, you're talking to multiple people, saying the same thing as they come up to the tables. It is a great way to get the discussion going. And we took all of those notes. We've heard from folks today to try to figure out where we go from here. But the why was pretty well presented. So, that was a really good discussion. I appreciated that. Let's see, 24th, Bell Plain Library Groundbreaking that was talked about. It'd be great to see that expansion. 25th, went down to St. Paul Y'all and went to the Greater MSP. Just to further understand more about what they're trying to do, how they're adapting in these changing environments and how we can better interact with them to see if that's something that makes sense going forward or not, as I look down to a long look. Is there a question with that or maybe later?
No, I just, I'll be interested in knowing what you can.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, I think it'd be important to have them come and do a, just a workshop, is what I'd like to see. A workshop, just a brief workshop. Forty-five minutes to an hour. And let us all hear from them and let us all have interactive discussion.
Thank you. And if we do that, I, because I know that's a budget item. We're going to be looking at all budget items. It's fairly substantial. And we do pay for that on behalf of our scale partners. So, if we do have that presentation, I think it'll be really important that we know about how all our, excuse me, partners use that organization too, to best evaluate. So,
You definitely have CDA as part of that.
Yeah, and maybe, yeah, making sure the MSP provides that. And that our partners provide that so that we can really evaluate the usefulness outcomes.
Agreed. No, everyone's on these uncertain times. And I know, you know, had a very good discussion with Peter as I walked in the door with counties. And so, I just think it'd be helpful to kind of wipe the slate clean to some extent and understand better where they're coming from and how we can interact to a point that makes some wins for our county. So, it was on the 25th. On the 5th, had a county discussion group talking about, well, cost shifts and all those fun things. And then earlier before the meeting, our new employee welcome. That ends my committee update, looking down to my left. Oh, yes, yes.
Just a comment or question. We have sent out, I think, two press releases in regard to these cost shifts. I know that Carver, I think, sent out one that had a lot more teeth in it. They had more specifics. And I don't know if we, more teeth is the right word, but I'm hoping that one of the future ones will say, as it sits now, this would mean a X percent potential levy increase. In other words, so there really is a specific number, as best we can, attached to it. So, when you're talking generally, it's going to shift costs, it's going to be a problem, it's going to cost a lot for that only carries so much. If you put a number to it, it gets even more attention. I think the next one should have that.
Well, and this is going to be a series. And I think, I don't disagree. I agree. I don't disagree, I agree. And so, I think the further on, the closer we get to the 19th, the more we're all going to know and we can be more specific. I think being hopeful, hoping some things would flesh themselves out. And to date, they have not. So, I think that would be the next step. I'm looking in the room. Okay.
So, yeah, Mr. Chair, we, we have put together, Rhonda did a really good job of putting together levy, right? If you're at 8%, if you're at 12%, if you're at 16% and projecting what that would mean for the average home. Here in Scott County, Senator Pratt had asked for that. So, as we see some of these shifts and as they start to hone in or have more specific discussions, we are, you know, prepared to talk to that. We know we've lost $70,000 for the, for our reentry homes for a grant for that. We're still waiting on a million dollar potential for the reentry homes from the federal government at justice grants. So, right now, there's just so much up in the air. But if we were to take an average like of the Senate or the House or the governor's proposal, we could, to what Commissioner Ulrich is asking for, put some specifics in there. What does that mean for the average home potentially in Scott County? So, we are working on that. Steve hit on some other things. We have a staff review board, right? And they bring forward and we have a discussion. There are some we have to fill. We're in 24/7 and it costs us more if we don't replace them, right? Or they're a revenue generating position versus not. But we have, I'm sure, over six or eight on hold right now that we're not moving forward and taking a look at to see what the session does. So, there are things in play. We are working on that. And we will have more specific numbers. Jake just received an email from Washington this morning from Marcus on some very specific action steps now that we need to take for the letter to try to move forward, Min Choices, right? They're going to start to hear it in committees. So, we need to get our group now in action again, talking to their reps in DC over that. So, there's things happening that we can talk about, some very big specifics. I did want to answer Commissioner Wolf's. The Highway Department got us. The average snow plowing event this last year was about $56,000. We had an event as low as $19,000. And we had a two-day event that was about $171,000. So, it just is based on what the event and what we need to do. But the average commissioner was $56,000. Also want to thank Commissioner Brennan and previous Mayor Williams or Janet Williams for the lower min. We are now, by area and by levy amount, population, the largest contributor to the lower min. And yet, we don't have the majority of the votes. Hennepin has two. We only have one vote. So, their efforts there, I think, are paying off. And we will bring that forward to a a work session and talk to you about how you want us to proceed on that and how we move that forward. That is an interesting one because if you were to talk to Hennepin County, they have like 57 water agencies they work with in Hennepin. And so, they have some interest in potentially looking at a little different at this. And what are the opportunities we might have to work together? So, the other thing is, we have the ditch board coming up. I know they're going to be rather quick. And then we have a work session following that. We're going to move the health insurance renewal up and go first. As Commissioner Beer has a radio show he has to do at 12:05. So, we want all of you there for that. So, just know we're going to flip that and have it go first.
That just got enhanced.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Looking down to our county attorney representative. Anything we need to recess for?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, nothing we need to recess for.
All right. There's some good news. Thank you so much. Okay, item number 12. Before we adjourn, as was talked about, ERP is coming up. Quarterly update, strategic plan update, health insurance renewal, Commissioner Round Robin. Any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
We got a
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Where is? Where is?
Chris, you ready?
You know.